I'm good, I'm good.
I'm planning on recording this meeting if everybody's okay with that?
Yes, for sure.
Recording in progress.
Alright, welcome everyone. I thank you all for joining our special meeting here. Just a quick background, we did the board at the time sign in December of 21, our updated ordinance to 142, which is 142A, which put into effect certain parameters that allowed the county to, the county and a select group of people to determine if there was a need to not have fireworks in any particular year. When we had the big heat cap in June of 21, we did not, I know I did not, and I don't think our other two commissioners at the time did either, think for a minute that it was in the RCWs that we actually had no power to do that. And we did not. So honestly, had we had the ban in 2021, we probably would have, because it was so incredibly dry and all turned out fine. There were no incidents, but, but you know, when it's that dry, it's a bit scary. So what we put into the ordinance was, we have fire danger rating is set to high by the Washington Department of Natural Resources and/or the Department of Natural Resources issues a burn ban, then that would trigger our ability to meet and decide whether or not we would decide to not have fireworks for any particular season. So on Wednesday, we got an email from Department of Natural Resources stating that, anyway, we got an email from them stating that fire danger would be at high. There are two levels above that, very high and extremely high. And so, oh thanks, I thought I left that down, anyway, thanks. And so with that, and the assumption that with that, there probably was going to be a triggering of a burn ban sometime before the board. We have to make these public meetings, we have to advertise them at least 24 hours ahead of time. So we were kind of trying to hedge our bets. So anyway, those things have happened. Sean, can I go to you really quickly?
Yeah, sure.
This is our break group, Community Development. And Randy, I want to share with him, he's our fire marshal.
The director is the fire marshal.
For this particular project.
So as the fire marshal, I'll kind of just give some background on why we are implementing a debris burn ban effective at 12:01 tomorrow morning. We have been monitoring the current projected fire danger conditions. This includes having weekly meetings generally on Mondays with DNR and the other fire marshals from Southwest Washington. At each of the meetings, we kind of go over the data and get everybody's feedback on whether or not a burn ban is prudent at the time. Our last meeting was this past Monday, and the consensus of the group at that time was that they would maintain their current status regarding burn restrictions and hold another meeting this coming Monday on the burn. In response to DNR's notification that Commissioner Olson was describing, we asked for a meeting with DNR earlier, so we held a meeting with them this morning to discuss the data behind them raising our fire danger rating for the coast fire danger rating area from moderate to high. During that meeting, we kind of went over the current conditions in terms of fuel levels and moisture and so forth, and also the forecasted conditions moving forward. And based on the info that we got from them and our discussions with Jeff at DNR, we agreed that it would be prudent for us to move into burn restrictions at this time. The burn restrictions this time of year are not uncommon. We generally go into them the end of June up to the mid-July, depending on what the data is. And this decision was, is independent of what this meeting is held for. It's just, you know, based on the info we got from DNR, we wanted to talk to them sooner than Monday. And so we met with them today and decided that we would implement restrictions, which only relate to debris burning, which is our typical burn ban. So you know, we limit people from burning large piles in their yards and fields and so forth. There still is allowance for having recreational fires and fire pits and campgrounds and so forth. So this is really targeted at burning large brush piles and things like that. So that's kind of where we're at.
So authorized fire pits and like just?
Yeah, yeah, contained fire pits. And then the fire pits that they have generally in state campgrounds, private campgrounds and stuff. Those types of fires, very rarely in our county have we got to the point of banning those, but we do every year hit a threshold where we ban debris burns.
Right, yeah, that happens every year, it just kind of depends what time of year.
Yeah, we have had them even as early as May. Just if we get a good east wind event, we put them on for, you know, a week or two just to get through a really dry, warm east wind event. And then we've removed them. But generally this time of year, somewhere in kind of a three-week to four-week window, we'll put those in place and then it'll generally continue into September. I think last year it stayed dry until October. Might have been a record, it was like mid-October, I think, by the time we removed it last year.
Also, part of the, part of the ban, or the ban, sorry, part of the ordinance is, and there's so many people here, I'm hoping that Chief Brundage from Fire One and Chief Gideon from Ravens and/or Chief Suiso from Fire Three, I believe, is that where I'm talking?
Fire's, Chief Suiso is unavailable.
Okay, okay.
I spoke with him.
Is it Fire Three or Fire Five?
Fire Three.
Okay, I thought I was right. I get Three and Five mixed up, sorry guys. So Chief Gideon and Chief Brundage are here. They are part of the group that that is in the ordinance to discuss, you know, whether or not we will curtail fireworks for a particular season. And did either of you have comments on this?
This is Chief Brundage, I am in the meeting. So I don't, I don't have any comments anymore than, you know, I know that there's been discussions with Department of Natural Resources and they provide some empirical data that I haven't seen that gives the kind of the level of the hazard. So I'm curious what, and I've asked this before, what data will be used to, other than just empirical or, excuse me, anecdotal from my perspective? So what questions can I help the commissioners with in regards? What kind of information would you like from me?
Well, I think, before I ask you that, Chief, we did get, we were able to put together a quick overview from the National Weather Service out of Portland, just a little bit ago. And I'm going to relay on Director McGlul, because you're much more versed in these terms than I am. Could you please give us a rundown of what they told us?
So Chief Brundage, in terms of empirical data, they went through the moisture values in the vegetation, also in the 100-hour fuels and in 1,000-hour fuels. The vegetation fuels are dry, but not, not anything approaching historic levels by any means. They're just middle-of-the-road dry. In addition, the 1,000-hour fuels, or the 100-hour fuels and 1,000-hour fuels are also dry, but not historically dry. This is, this is kind of the beginning. We're not where we're going to be eventually. But there is risk, but it's not a critical risk at this point. Does that help, Chief?
I think I have to ask him to mute, don't I?
Yeah.
Sorry about that, I can't unmute myself, but I'm trying to mute so you don't have to listen to all the fire radio chatter in the background.
What about that, Chief? That was my error.
No, that's okay. Scott, did DNR give you a fire weather forecast? So what the temperatures are going to be, prevailing winds, strength of the winds, moisture updates, have, did they give you? I know the DNR has access to some of that information that's a little better than just watching whatever local news channel. Do you have any of that information you can share?
You get the fire weather forecast from John Preston earlier this week.
I got something from you that was let from last week. But I haven't seen, I haven't looked at what the current, you know, I haven't, I haven't seen that.
That's the way.
I thought you guys had a discussion with DNR this morning.
Yeah, we had a discussion with DNR. Then we also had a discussion with the National Weather Service, who I did talk about protections for winds and humidities. Their model's pretty variable at this point. There were about 50/50 that we would get pretty low humidities in the Raymond area, possibly down 15 to 30% during the daytime, and then that would increase in the evenings. But at the coast, it was even a wider range, but some of them, you know, were down mid-30s up to 60/70% later in the evenings, so.
And since the lower summer coast were pretty, probably not going to happen.
Yeah, I said it was really dependent on the wind direction. A lot of the models showed that we were going to have a westerly and northwesterly wind. A couple of the other models showed potentially something a little bit more from the east onshore. But it was, it was nothing very set in stone. It was pretty 50/50s based on what the Weather Service said.
Okay, have you had a chance to talk to state parks?
We really have not. They know that we're making this consideration, but they didn't weigh in, right Paul? I need to talk to them, Paul did.
Correct, yeah. They're aware, Chief, that we are having the meeting today, but they didn't have, they didn't have any inputs at this time, since this came together pretty quickly.
So if you, if you do, I'm just giving a hypothetical here, and I don't know that you have an answer. If you decide to do a ban or restriction, can those, at this time, those people can all go out to the beach to discharge their fireworks? Is that correct?
That, for the best of our knowledge, that is correct. We are not taking public comment at this, at this meeting as it is, just to discuss, you know, what we're going to do. But Mayor Phillips might have some information, and I see his hands up.
Thank you, Commissioner. I would just point out that we've looked at the humidity, we've looked at the winds in Long Beach.
Recording stopped.
And the weather, temperature, and we looked at the amount of, if you want to call it drizzle or moisture overnight and in the mornings. So we're not extremely dry. We have fog roll in and mist during the day. So we're still doing fireworks at this time in Long Beach with the restrictions that we have in place from last year, which cuts down the sale and the usage of fireworks. And again, we don't see anything in the weather that's given us anything that really have major concern of at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And as I said, we just felt like we put this tool into motion. We hit the two triggers that we built into it. So we really felt that we needed to, you know, I'm sorry that there's people out here that think, you know, okay, why are you talking about banning it now? One of, one of our issues.
Commissioner, if I may interject, I see some things in the comments. The county did not stop the recording. We had an individual on the Zoom call that chose to record the meeting on their own. The county records all public meetings. This meeting is being recorded by our recording system and will be available. So I, it's popping up in the chat. So again, just for, we had a citizen that chose to record the Zoom call on their own, but the county is still very much recording this meeting. So hopefully that can dispel any concerns that anyone has.
What, my thing?
Yeah, we'll get posted as soon as we can.
Okay. All our meetings are all posted, the audio is posted on the website. So anyway, we had the two metrics that we put in place for ourselves, so we felt that we needed to use our own. So, Chief Gideon, did you, did you have anything?
I don't necessarily have any comments, Commissioner. I'm happy to answer any questions that I can help with from the board, if needed. It has, you know, it's been, you know, very dry, but we really, at this time, haven't seen an increase in fires correctly related to the weather at this time.
Thank you very much. Chief Brundage, did you have anything else?
Well, I mean, I have a bunch of questions, but they're, you know, if Long Beach is going to do the fireworks and if you ban the fireworks, do we tell everybody to go to Long Beach to set off their fireworks?
Yeah, yeah. Well, I don't think, given, I will open up the floor for a motion, because that is why we called the meeting. But I, I'm thinking that, that given the information that we've gotten today, we probably won't go that direction, but I will leave it up to my other two commissioners to decide if they want to do that. I think we'll keep, obviously continue to keep an eye on things. But I, after, after we talked with the National Weather Service fellow, I just, I felt, I felt a lot better. It looks like a lot of the heat is going to be inland. If it comes, the 80 to 90 plus degrees is going to be as it usually is by five quarter. That's what the maps that you sent us on your email notes with those indicated. There weren't even any warning, they have the, what do they call that? The legends with the colors. There wasn't even any warning colors on the coast in, in the information that you sent us today. So, so I, I think, you know, as, as always, we just really want people to be careful. We want everyone to have a good time, but everybody needs to use some common sense and, and just be careful, be mindful of your neighbors, be mindful of yourselves, you know, watch your children. Just, just be careful, because fireworks is, you know, some people hate them, some people love them. They're pretty to look at, but they are, they can be dangerous if they are used improperly. So we always want to, always want to encourage the proper and safe use of them. And, and I would like to reiterate that right now, we are in the upper-middle range according to Department of Natural Resources of fire danger. There are two levels above that, and we are, we are in high right now, which we just achieved. And there's a varying high and, and a midstream that we don't foresee getting before the Fourth of July, so.
Also, maybe Scott can do this, the DNR graphics for the ban, not the ban, but the raising it is not designed in one area, it's coastal and inland. So it's, according to that graph, it's not, maybe Scott can touch on that.
So that's correct. The, 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 the information even from the National Weather Service that I sent to you all this morning, the information that DNR uses reflects all of the Cascade Pacific region, which is basically the entire southwest corner of the state. And we just now got to the point where all of the county fire marshals made the decision to put a burn ban into place. It's dry, but like I said earlier in the meeting, it is certainly not critically dry or in anywhere close to the record territory.
Yeah, yeah. Did you hear that?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, how can I talk out here? Okay. Mr. Brundage, did you have anything before I call for a motion?
Well, I do.
Okay.
Not been appropriate.
Yes, it was.
So we've been listening for the last several months, primarily to anti-fireworks people. But we've been listening for a number of months now. I will say that those folks have made some very compelling arguments that really have changed my thinking. I think that in the long run, a ban on fireworks is the safe and prudent thing to do. I do, however, think that it's still worthwhile for that to be a part of the people. Having said that, however, I think that an act would ban today, Friday, June 30th, four days before the Fourth of July, is really inherently unfair to a lot of people. I think that we have people who operate fireworks stands, who've invested a lot of money in their product, in their employees, and those sorts of things. We have people who are here already for the Fourth, excited about fireworks, people who are on their way, and people who will soon be on their way, that are excited about fireworks. I wanted to make sure today that we heard from our fire chiefs, our weather people, our emergency management director, our DCD director, and others, because we're having this meeting today to make the most accurate and most fair decision we can for all of our people in the county. So I wanted to say that, again, in the long term, I do think we're moving towards a ban on fireworks. I just don't think that that should happen today, four days before the Fourth.
And just to be, just to be clear, if we did do a ban today, it would just be for this year? I know we're red, Commissioner, but I just wanted to make that very clear on the call.
I would also like to, you know, come out and say that if you choose not to ban fireworks today, I would ask these people, I kind of joined Lisa in this, I would ask people to please use common sense, encourage others to use common sense, make smart decisions, watch out for yourselves and one another, and just simply be safe. I understand that not everybody does that, but I sure would like to encourage people to do that this year.
Mr. Brundage, did you?
I'm sorry, you bring that? Yeah.
Did you have anything?
Well, not really, I'm just, you know, I want to thank the fire chiefs and Scott and everybody for going through the process and giving us the best information to, you know, look forward on this.
I agree. And I'd like to apologize, this is the first time that we've been in this situation under this ordinance and probably didn't know some of the things that were available to us and especially to the fire chiefs. We'll be a little more organized once we do this again, well, in a few months, if we have to do this. I honestly hope that it rains all of June next year.
My second chance.
But, but, yeah, I, to our two fire chiefs that are, that are on that, are part of this, my apologies and we'll, we'll get, we'll get a little more organized next time.
Yes.
Yes.
I'd like to just add one.
Sure.
I know this is a very contentious issue. I know that there are passionate people on both sides of the issue, those who want fireworks banned as well as those who want fireworks to continue, and I appreciate, you know, all of that passion. I appreciate the people who have contacted me and reached out to me. The other thing that I would like to ask is that with all of that passion that's out there, I guess I would like to ask the people on both sides of the aisle on this one to to respect one another, to understand that there are different opinions out there, and to respect the idea that, that we can agree to disagree in a respectful, kind and polite manner. You know, we don't have to be enemies in this. You know, there are good people who think fireworks should be banned and there are good people who feel that fireworks should not be banned. So please be respectful of one another, and I guess, thank you.
I appreciate it, Commissioner. I would, I would agree with that. Hey, is there anything else? Is there anything from any one that we haven't covered? Okay. So at this point, I think because we did call the meeting, because we did put together a potential resolution that I would call if anyone feels that there needs to be a motion. If you do, we have to look. If you don't feel like there needs to be one, then they just die as they're, that's how it goes, so. I'm not hearing a motion, so that, that means that dies and we will not take restrictive action this year in the fireworks issue. We, we do feel like we observed the parameters before in our ordinance. As I said during another very contentious issue, you know, if, if as things happen and we think we need to to work on this a little bit and maybe make it better, we're, we're, we're not, not versed in doing that. This is just what we have for now. This is the first time we've had to utilize it. And, and we're trying to use the tools that we put in place and we're trying to be fair to everyone on both sides and our community, our people that live here, our people that visit. We cherish them all. They're all very important, so I want to thank you all for joining in. We have over a hundred people on Zoom and we have three folks in the room and we thank you all for, for joining us. And that will conclude our meeting. Thank you. If you could not close it anyway. Just muted?
Yeah.